255 billion pesos. So hindi po siya unprogrammed appropriations. The 255 billion pesos remain to be programmed appropriations with very clear line items that it was real, that they were realigned to.
Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, the 255 billion now we diverted, we took it out from DPWH funds. And ano 'ong breakdown? Sino mga nakinabang na ibang agencies po? Can we have those break down, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I have shared it with the body as to the breakdown. But what we would like to highlight would be the biggest gainers in terms of the reallocation of the 255 billion. Ang priority areas po, also as provided by the guidance of the president, would be education, health, and agriculture. So out of the 255 billion pesos, roughly 65% of that went to education, health, and agriculture. Education received an additional amount of 38 billion. Health received an additional amount of 89 billion. And agriculture received an additional amount of 44 billion. However, the rest po were spread across other agencies like the D O T R, DOJ, DND, the judiciary, DNR, the ICT, Ombudsman COA, CHR, COMELEC, National Commission, Senior Citizens, LGSF, and DMW. So as much as we can, we really spread out the resources towards the programs and departments and agencies that need augmentation the most.
Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, did you mention Department of Energy, especially the National Electrification Administration? Meron ba kayo 'yan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. As per our current proposal, we propose to add 4 billion pesos towards NEA's CTO electrification program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor. That's why I've been waiting to hear, no? Kasi talaga naman ating mga kababayan, marami pa pong walang ilaw. With that program of additional 4 billion, marami pong mapapailawan 'yan, no? As we know, we represent the power block, we receive the electric cooperatives, ang ating mga member consomme owners. With that amount, Madam Speaker, I gladly... Marami salamat po at marami nating makakababayan for the longest time na hindi magkakailaw. Ngayon ay makagaron na sila ng ilaw. For my closing remarks, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, as of April 2025, outstanding debt stands at 16.75 trillion. Am I right?
Mr. Speaker, that is correct. It's at 17.5 trillion in terms of outstanding debt.
The 2024 census of population shows that the total population of the country is 112,729. As of July 1, 2024, this debt would roughly translate to 148,624 per Filipino as of 2024. Kung sana ay naramdaman ng bawat Filipino, ng utang nila ay meron naman talagang napupuntahan na programa at serbisyo mula sa gobyerno na kanilang tunay na napapakinabangan. Okay lang sana, pero ako, kapag tinanong ako na kung saan tingin ko, ay makabuluhan ang pag-uutang natin na kung ramdam ko ba ang kinagaganda na ekonomiya natin dahil sa pag-uutang. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, pero ang sagot ko ay hindi. Kaya, kaya ba, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, ang taong bayan pa kaya? Yun lang po, magandang, marami salamat, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor. I'm really glad that the 255 billion ay hinati-hati natin sa different agencies, especially the DEEPED. When I was at Exicom, madadagdagan tayo ng 20,000 classroom. I think we are short around 165,000 classroom. For that, we need maybe next year, mas maganda po. And I'm very thankful that the DOE, especially the National Electrification Administration, may 4 billion sila. It might translate, it may translate to around almost 700 households na magkakailaw. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Deusus Majority Leader. Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker, next to interpolate the sponsor, I move to recognize Representative Lila de Lima of ML Partilis.
ML Partilis, Representative Lila M. de Lima. You're recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor. Good afternoon. I'd like to start, I'd like to start my interpolation by inviting the attention of the Madam Sponsor about the statement issued few hours ago by the Budget Coalition. There's this group of budget watchdogs that issued their statement as complaining about the non-genuine inclusion of the civil society groups in monitoring the budget deliberations. Yes, they recognize the fact that, as announced by the former speaker and also by the Madam Sponsor herself, that this time around, the proceedings of the budget would be open to the civil society organizations as a non-voting observer. But they have issued a statement, as I said just a few minutes ago, that they are actually complaining about the lack of genuine inclusivity of the civil society groups in the various budget deliberations. So can we have, please, the reaction of the Madam Sponsor with respect to this serious allegations of the group?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. Actually, with regard to this, the Committee on Appropriations and the House Leadership really employed all the means that we can in order to foster active participation with our CSO partners. We conducted the People's Budget Review wherein we gave them the opportunity to give us their thoughts with regard to the budget. We also adjusted the way that we conducted the hearings to, for them to have a channel to field their questions to the departments and the resource persons. We also made sure that whichever inputs they had are incorporated in the budget itself. For example, one thing, one thing that stuck to me was the Move As One Coalition, which really, in the Safe Travel PH, which both advocated for active transport. That's why we put additional budget towards active transport. The, our CSOs relating to the, to education also were very strong advocates of increasing funding for special education programs and increasing funding for classrooms. We took that into consideration when we realigned the budget towards DEEPED. That's why you have there additional budget for iPad, for special education, for madrasa. There were also advocacies around agriculture and the like. So we really made sure. The other one, palo po, they had a question around being able to put in additional funding towards land compensation in DAR. So we also added additional funding towards that in the BRC. So we actually greatly value the inputs of our civil society organization partners. And we really try, I know that they have raised a concern that they were not informed as to the schedule of the BRC, and we apologize for that. But with regard to all the other meetings, we always make sure to let them know about the schedule. And I want to reassure them that whichever inputs they have shared to the committee, those were taken into consideration and as they would see in the budget as it is now, we have put in additional budget towards the programs that they've mentioned in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor. But let me just quote from their statement. And in fact, they're even saying that the BRC is the bagong small committee. And then part of their statement says, "Sa kabila ng House Resolution Number 94, naofisyal na nag-aanyaya sa mga lehitimong people's organizations bilang non-voting observers sa pambansang proseso ng budget, patuloy na pagwawalang bahala sa taong bayan mula sa makabuluhang partisipasyon. Limitado ang akses sa mga pagdinig, dokumento, mga budget sponsor, at kritikal na impormasyon. Habang ang mga desisyon na humuhubog sa kinabukasan ng mga programa ng bansa ay ginagawa sa likod ng saradong pinto." That's basically their complaints, lack of transparency or genuine transparency, and even accusing us of having BRC as the small, as the new small committee. We all know what happened with respect to the small committee in the previous budget deliberation, especially the 2025 budget. But I thank the Madam Sponsor for explaining that to us.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, with the indulgence of the Honorable de Lima, that one, I would have to react to that comment that the Budget Amendments Review Subcommittee is the new small committee. We have done everything, and I know the BRC members would agree with me that every single line item that went into the 255 billion pesos, we made sure to be as transparent as possible. Even during the BRC, they saw all the deliberations which were approved, disapproved, and et cetera. So we're, the small committee in the past, they did not know who the members, we did not know and who the members were. We had no idea what the deliberations were about and what the outputs were from the previous small committee. But with the BRC now, everything is totally transparent. People know who are the members of the BRC. They, we allowed for proper representation from the different parties, and they know po exactly which line items we considered. So yun lang po siguro, if, thank you to the Honorable de Lima for giving me the opportunity to react to that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor. I do hope that the People's Budget Coalition would find the reaction or the responses of the Madam Sponsor satisfactory. Just a few fundamental clarifications, please. Are we being made to understand that the GAAP now is actually just the NIP, except, except the amendments made by BRC? And that is the reallocation of the 255.5 billion, originally allotted to DPWH for the flood control projects, but now reallocated. Is it correct to assume, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, that there were actually no changes from the NIP into the GAAP? Except for those 255.5?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I can confirm that to our distinguished colleague. So the committee report, as you can see now, is exactly, not exactly, I don't want to say exactly, but it is the first reading copy as filed, the GAAP as filed for the first reading copy, minus the 225 billion from DPWH. So definitely, there was a huge change within the DPWH budget. And consequently, we realigned the 255 billion towards the different agencies and programs as we discussed during the executive committee.
So essentially, those were the only changes? And that should really be the case?
Yes.
Because I understand that historically, there are not supposed to be major changes between the NIP and the GAAP as approved and assigned, right? But we saw the abnormalities that were evident from the 2023, 2024, and 2025. In other words, the norm or the rule historically, the wallada dapat pagbabago or major changes from the NIP kapag ginawa na itong GAAP and ultimately approved as GAAP. That is the correct norm. But it did not happen through 2023, 2024, and 2025. So I'm glad to know now na bumalik tayo sa dating norm. There's not supposed to be any major changes. So I cannot help asking now, dun sa nakita natin na mga unprecedented cuts and diversions after the BICAM for the 2023, 2024, and the 2025 GAAP, I wonder, did the DBCC or the agencies comprising the DBCC, especially the DBM and perhaps also the DOF, were they aware of those unprecedented cuts and diversions? And a related question to that, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, is, did the DBCC or the economic team ever saw the BICAM reports for 2023, 2024, and 2025?
Mr. Speaker, upon conferring with our economic managers, they confirmed that they did not see the BICAM Conference Committee report. What they saw would be the ratified version of the BICAM report, but not the detailed version, just the totals. So essentially, just the agencies from two, from two, what the previous levels were and what the new levels are. So the most detailed version that they saw was the actual enrolled copy of the...
But I suppose they knew about these huge cuts and diversions. Certain agencies, the funds from certain agencies were cut and then diverted. And then because, and then those, those agencies that were defunded, their budgets were transferred to UA or unappropriated or unprogrammed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, they did see, when they saw the ratified version of the BICAM report, that some of the totals really went down or some of the totals went up. But they weren't able to see exactly the details that went into the cuts or the increases towards particular agencies. And they want to clarify, the economic managers would like to clarify that at that point, they are unable to intervene in any shape or form. But they were able to see in the ratified version the big increases and decreases across agencies.
Here's the summary of the cuts. For 2023, GAAP, 395.3 billion. 2024, GAAP, 545.64.5 billion. 2025, GAAP, 487.5 billion. For the total cuts of 1.447.3 trillion. And for the 2025 GAAP and then GAAP, what was vetoed was only 26 billion out of the total cuts of 487.5 billion. I find it difficult to believe that the economic team or the economic managers were not able to realize or to see that these are very unusual and abnormal cuts and diversions. And my next question, of course, did they ever call the attention of the president before the president signed those budgets? Signed them into GAAP? Walang nagreklamo? Walang nagreklamo dun sa mga agencies na inalisan ng pondo? Kahit malalaki, 'yung iba na inalisan? At linagay na lang sa unprogrammed appropriations? And then the funds, the funds that were taken from them, where diverted to certain programs, some of which are new ones?
So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, actually, they were able to see it at the point where they received the enrolled copy of the bill. It was at, it was that, it was at that point where they noticed the huge cuts and reductions and increases, the realignment in some of the programs. So yun po 'yung dahilan why they were able to advise the president about these questionable changes.
Were not able?
They were.
They were able to advise the president?
Once they saw the enrolled copy, they advised the president about these questionable changes. And that is why, if you would see po, the veto message of the president with regard to the 2025 GAAP, there is now there a Section 6 pertaining to increases in appropriations and new budgetary items that actually was brought, that came about because of the advice of the economic managers.
Because of course, the enrolled bill is the enrolled bill and not just signed. That is the very version of the budget that is presented to the executive through the DBM and then the president himself. So you are saying that the president was aware of those huge cuts and diversions as they appeared in the enrolled bill? The question is, did he realize the implications of that? Because when we talk about the NIP, and kaya nga hindi na dapat talaga ginagalaw ng husto 'yung NIP. Because the NIP represents the priority programs of the executive department through the president. And sila, you know, they're supposed to be, they know, I mean, it's the president... I mean, it's the President that is the principal driver of development direction. So again, as I, as I stated earlier, historically, Congress approves the budget with no major changes. And now that this 2023, 20, 2024, and 2025 budgets have huge changes, and that didn't, it didn't occur to the President that it undermines his priority programs? Kasi otherwise, it can be concluded that the President and the economic managers seem to acquiesce to the abnormal levels of cuts and diversions, which never happened before.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, actually po, because of when they saw those questionable changes in the enrolled copy of the bill for the 2025 GAH, uh, that is the reason why they advised the President about it. And that is one of the reasons why there was a direct veto amounting to 26 billion, as mentioned by the Honorable Delima. Uh, there was a direct veto of 26 billion and there were also conditional vetoes for the 2025 GAH. So they really did, uh,
It's just 20, it's just 20, 25 billion? Di ho ba out of 487.5 billion? Binayaan na lang 'yung iba, kahit questionable?
The others po, actually,
The first time when I asked this question during the DBCC Committee Budget Committee Interpellations, I seem to recall that the response of, uh, the good DBM Secretary here is about, "DBM allegedly lacks the capacity to detect those cuts and diversions." That was the answer that I distinctly remember from the DBM Secretary. And now they're saying they're actually aware of that. Bago ito pinapirma sa Pangulo. So which is which? Did you or did you not know about these huge cuts and diversions?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, actually po, um, aside from the 26 billion that was directly vetoed, effectively po, because of the section, uh, because of section six as put in the President's veto message, again, as I cited pertaining to the increases in appropriations and new budgetary items, in effect po, roughly around 800 billion of the 2025 budget was put under fisaro. So nagkaroon po ng ganong control. Uh, those projects that were deemed, uh, questionable were not released right away. So nagkaroon po ng ganong control and until now, I believe some of those items are still, and until now, many of those items, um, amounting to 800 billion have not been released yet. So hindi lang po 26 billion, nakita din po nila yon na may ganong questionable changes.
May questionable changes. Ang problema nga po, kasi kapag tinatransfer lang sa unprogrammed appropriations, we know that if it's UA, unprogrammed appropriations, there's no fund there, correct? Because the funds come from the BESF, Budget Expenditure SF. What is the SF?
Of financing po, yes.
The what?
Uh, uh, and sources of financing.
And sources of funding or financing.
Yes.
So yun talaga ang pondo. But the UA, wala. Pero, ang expectation is that later, it will be funded kapag nandyan na 'yung three. Either, either the three, whether, uh, you know, may excess and then may new taxes. And then the third one?
Loans, new, news, new loans.
New, new loans. Although into 2024 budget, nag, uh, nagdagdag 'yung mga so-called excess funds or reserve funds from GOCs. Pero inalis na yan sa 2025 dahil nga pumutok 'yung controversy about the field health funds. And that's why my next question is, how about the PDIC? Di ho ba kumuha rin ng reserve, the so-called excess funds or reserve funds? I'm not even clear about that. Is it reserve or is it excess? I think it's just a reserve fund, just like the field health. So, hindi ho ba kinuha rin yon, 'yung PDIF at linagay sa National Treasury? And then, so what's the status of the PDIC, PDIC, reserve funds? Unlike the field health, na pinapabalik na ngayon ng Pangulo, and sa pagbalik nga, kailangan lagyan uli ng bagong appropriation, right? We cannot just say that 'yung dating appropriation, yun ang gagamitin. Because you cannot take out something from the National Treasury kung walang bagong appropriation. That's why we have to fund again or provide for the field health funds. How about PDIC? I'm curious about the PDIC.
With regard to PDIC po, um, yes, the funds were taken away, um, reverted back to the National Treasury, but they have adequate reserves. So this would not eat into their, um, this would not affect their operations po.
So it does not affect?
Does not affect, yes. They have adequate reserves po. Um, so even, uh, taking into account the funds that were reverted back, hindi po affected 'yung operations nila.
Okay, unprogrammed appropriations na naman po tayo. 'Yung mga linagay ho ba sa UA or unprogrammed appropriations for the 2023, for the 2024, and the 2025 GAH? Meron na ho ba doon mga pinondohan subsequently? And if so, because the, the expectation is that this may be funded. I suppose there are or there were that have been ultimately funded. And then my next question for that is, ano ho ba 'yung nagiging parameters or standards ng economic team in identifying which exactly of those items or those programs under the UA ang popondohan na? Whenever there would be new funds or new sources of revenues? Is there any standard? And ang gusto ko nga hong malaman dun ba, dun ho ba sa mga linipat sa UA, alin po doon 'yung talagang mga binalik by subsequent funding? Did it ever happen?
Mr. Speaker, uh, in response to the first query of Representative Delima, the prioritization under the unprogrammed appropriations follow this, presented from the top priority down towards the lowest priority. So top priority, um, would be under the category that, that do not, that does not require excess or new revenue collections. So there are only two types of expenditures that, uh, go into this category, which is one, support the foreign assisted projects, and two, budget support to GOCs. The second category po and lower in terms of priority would be those that require excess or new revenue collections. So those that fall under this would be personnel benefits, social services, GOP counterpart of foreign assisted projects, infrastructure projects, and other priority projects authorized within purpose numbers one and three dash one of the, of the general provisions.
Yeah, I'm not sure if my, my question about parameters or standards have been answered. And, uh, may I ask for a certification from the DBCC? Any of the relevant agencies of DBCC? As to which exactly among those diverted to or transferred to unprogrammed appropriations from 2023, 2024, and 2025? Ang talagang pinondohan subsequently? If I can please ask for a certification, not today, but, uh, before the termination of the budget deliberations?
Yes po, um, a while ago po, I, I believe Representative Tino also asked for similar data. Um, but I think for, for Representative Tino, if I'm not mistaken, flood control projects po yata specifically, 'yung all po, no? Under those programs, um, that were mentioned. So we will also, um, the DBM also commits to furnish the same. So they can provide po a list of all those projects that were transferred from programmed towards unprogrammed appropriations that were ultimately released po and funded.
Straight question, are unprogrammed appropriations indispensable? Can we do away with unprogrammed appropriations? If you can please convince us that somehow unprogrammed appropriations must stay in our yearly budgets? Because kung ganyan po, kasi I'm also wondering about the AFP modernization. In the 2024 GAB and then after the BICAM, 10 point, 10 billion was cut from the AFP modernization. And then I think in the 2025, ganun na naman po, another 5 billion was cut from the AFP modernization. How about for the 2026?
Mr. Speaker, um, distinguished colleague, actually, upon confer with the economic managers, they also, um, see that it's possible to, um, not do away with, uh, uh, unprogrammed appropriations, but lessen it. They, we were discussing that there's a possibility of putting a cap. So, uh, because there are certain types of projects that really may require unprogrammed appropriations to be triggered. For example po, risk management fund, PAPs, our obligations under foreign assisted projects, and health, what's it, health emergency allowances, or HEA. So we recognize that that's something that can actually be reduced. We can, it, it, there can be a cap.
Because UA is not part of the GAH, correct? UA, unprogrammed appropriations, I am told, is not part of the GAH. So if it's not part of the GAH, but not, hindi ba pwedeng maituring din yon? It would resemble the nature of port barrel for the executive branch?
Mr. Speaker, uh, distinguished colleague, actually, the, the unprogrammed appropriations technically, uh, would be part of the GAH because, uh, it's a supplemental budget, although it doesn't eat into the total budget ceiling, but it still is part of the GAH po.
It has to be considered when, when, uh, when determining the, uh, budget ceiling. Because we know about the constitutional provision about we should not go beyond what is, uh, proposed in the, in the NEP. So sinasama ho ba talaga yan?
Um, it's part of the GAH as a supplemental budget, but it doesn't eat the, the total ceiling of the GAH because it does, it requires additional sources po. So it, for example po, in our current, uh, NEP of 6.793 trillion, unprogrammed appropriations are not actually part of that whole amount. Um, kasi po, for us to be able to fund unprogrammed appropriations, those would require additional revenue sources po. So, uh, it's part of the GAH technically as a supplemental document, uh, but it's not, uh, it doesn't eat the, it doesn't eat the ceiling, the total ceiling for the GAH.
My time is almost up, but I still have two points, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor. Tungkol naman po sa underspending, there has always been, we have a history of underperformance and underspending. This is a perennial challenge always to the, to the DBM in preparing the budget. Pero bakit po, paulit-ulit na malaki pa rin ang allocation sa mga department na naga-underspend o naga-underperform? And my next question with respect to that is, has the DBM ever withheld or reallocated funds from a department that consistently failed to meet its physical and financial targets? Because many, many agencies, many departments really have, uh, records of underspending and underutilization.
Yes po, so, um, upon conferring with the economic managers, they, they, what they do is if, uh, an agency or a department consistently underperforms or underutilizes the budget given to them in the GAH, in the following year, binababaan po 'yung budget ceiling for that quarter.
Binababaan na lang.
Binababaan na po.
Because 'yung mga underspending, nandyan yan sa mga audit reports, right?
Yes po.
And so the, the DBM would know about those, uh, agencies.
Yes po, we, we, the, the econo, uh, the, in the NEP for the following year, bababaan po 'yung budget ceiling, now underperforming agencies.
My last point. Okay, I just want to understand the very role of DBM and DOF. Okay, recent reports indicate that 118, 118.5 billion per year is lost to ghost or substandard flood control projects. I know that, uh, zero ngayon sa, would you, would you confirm, Madam Sp, Madam Sponsor, that in the GAH, zero, zero budget for flood control projects?
Technically po, they're, uh, within DPW, uh, GAH po or the H, in the GAB po?
Uh, I'm sorry, the GAB, the GAB. For 2026. Because there are certain, there are legislators that are saying that it seems to be an extreme solution. Because what if there are flood control projects na kailangan talaga? Now, dahil nga takot na tayo na magkaroon uli ng mga ganyan, 'yung mga ghost or substandard flood control projects, so gusto ko sanang maintindihan, ano ho ba 'yung naging role ng DBM? Gensah, screening, validating, and monitoring budget requests for flood control projects? I'm talking, of course, about previous budgets, 2023, 2024, 2025, even earlier. Is there any particular role that the DBM perform with respect to scrutinizing the, uh, the submissions of the DPWH? Bakit maraming nakakalusot? Is there any process of vetting these flood control projects?
Madam Sponsor, before you answer that, uh, may we remind Representative that your time, uh,
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Has expired. Thank you.
Just that, that, that point, last point.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, with regard to the first question as to whether there are flood control projects remaining still in the committee report or in the current version of the H GAB? Meron pa po technically, because, um, ang matanggal po from DPWH would be the locally funded flood control projects amounting to 255 billion. Meron pong natira, but all of the remaining flood control projects are, uh, uh, foreign assisted projects, totaling 17 billion. In DPWH po, uh, may natira po na 15 billion, but all of these are foreign assisted projects. And in MMDA, may natira din po na roughly 2 billion, but, uh, all foreign assisted projects as well. With regard to the next question po, I will quickly confirm lam po as to what, uh, controls, if any, DBM exercises in vetting the flood control projects. I will quickly confirm lam po with the DBM. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. If I may po, um, provide the response of the DBM with regard to the question as to what involvement they have in terms of vetting flood control projects proposed, um, to be for inclusion in the NEP. So in the case of the DPWH, it is pertinent to highlight that evaluation of DPWH budget proposals mainly focuses on the budgetary allocation per subprogram, except for foreign assisted, assisted projects which are evaluated by project. This manner of evaluation is in view of the DPWH non-submission of the proposed project details per subprogram for the proposed fiscal year. The project listing is only submitted upon the approval of the DBM of the agency's final budget level for inclusion in the NEP. Moreover, the identification of projects to be funded is being delegated to DPWH, being the state's engineering and construction arm. As construed under section three, subparagraph four, chapter one, title five of the executive order number 292 dated July 25, 1987, or the Administrative Code of 1987, to wit, the department, in order to carry out its mandate, shall identify plans, secure funding for program design, construction, uh, sorry, construct or undertake prequalification bidding and award of contracts of public works, projects, um, et cetera. So underscoring the provisions, it should be noted that the DBM does not interfere on how the DPWH allocates the approved budget under the NEP by implementing unit that is either region or district. But, um, the, the response po actually is, um, so the DBM, when they, when, when they tell the DPWH that this is your ceiling for a particular, uh, for, as a whole, and a, for a particular program, pag nagsabit po 'yung DPWH, for example, ng list of flood control projects, they can do an evaluation from the level of being able to spot, for example, po, duplicate, duplicate projects. Usually po, when they see duplicate projects, they revert back to DPWH, they call it out. And usually po, may sagot 'yung DPWH. Halimbawa po, they would say that this is part of a phased program, um, those kinds of, um, those kinds of answers po. So in terms of the quality, um, evaluating the quality of the program or the feasibility of a program, um, hindi na po na-involvement DBM doon, given that the engineering arm, um, engineer and construction arm of the government is DPWH and, um, co-equal po sila, uh, within the executive department. Um, but in terms of the oversight po, making sure that the, that the project is implemented well, that sits with COA po, but that's in terms of implementation po.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor. I would have wanted to ask follow-up questions, but since my time is up, so perhaps I'll just reserve it for, uh, during the, uh, the deliberations or the interpolations for the DBM budget itself. Thank you.
Maraming, maraming salamat, Representative De Lima.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you very much to the Honorable Lila De Lima for the questions.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor. Majority Leader, please. Session suspended. While we are in suspension, may I, uh, request for a 30-minute break to allow our resource persons, uh, to facilitate whatever it may be for their personal, uh... Session, uh, resume. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Majority Leader, uh, Speaker, may I request for a 30-minute suspension?
A request for a 30-minute suspension, approved. For everyone who would like to take a break, uh, for your, like, sustenance and like, uh, activities. Thank you. Session is suspended.